It is six thirty September twenty first, two thousand and twenty, and that is time to call this committee a whole meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Augustine Schulte.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Hemer.
Here.
Jabonski.
Here.
Kreshaw.
Here.
Lor.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Council President Barr, the roll's been called.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one item on our agenda this evening. And I've got, I'm sorry, we are in compliance with Open Meetings Act, Nebraska revised statute eight four, ten, fourteen oh seven. Current copy of this act is available at this meeting. We have one item on the agenda tonight, and the Columbus South Mobility Study. Mr. Bogus.
Yes, hi, Rick Bogus, City Engineer. So, you know, over the past several months, we've done a lot of outreach to people, not only in this area of the south part of Columbus, but through the whole community, on the mobility of South Columbus. And that being because of the new viaducts at Third Avenue and Twelfth Avenue, and some of the closures that are downtown, and so forth and so on. Along with getting the traffic from Third Avenue to Thirty-Third Avenue, kind of that whole corridor in there, south part of town. We hired HGR Engineering to do the study, had a lot of reach out, a lot of information from a lot of people. So we got a really good report here. So tonight Jake Weiss from HGR will present that study to you.
All right, as Rick said, I'm Jake Weiss, I work at HGR in Omaha, Nebraska. I'm a traffic engineer. I've been with HGR for about eight years now. So, let's get started. So first we'll walk through a quick agenda. We hope to give you guys an overview of the major milestones in the South Mobility Study, and then open up for some questions at the end. So first we'll go through the study purpose and goals, followed by existing and future conditions, followed by the public outreach. As Rick said, that was a very important component of this study. Then we'll go through some initial and refined alternatives, and then wrap it up with some recommendations. All right, so the study purpose for this study was to evaluate the potential need for improvements to safely and efficiently move east-west vehicle and pedestrian traffic in the southern portion of Columbus. So that map on the right you see is that study area that Rick was talking about. It's kind of bounded by the UPR tracks on the north, the levee on the south, Thirty-Third Ave or Highway Thirty, Eighty-One on the west, and just east of Third Ave on the east. A little background on this study, it was a recommended action from the LRTP that was published a couple of years ago. In addition, it was also discussed back in two thousand and five when the City of Columbus Transportation Plan Update was published. And some goals and objectives for this study. So number one was to evaluate future and existing conditions. Number two was to survey the general public and get their feedback on what this corridor should be, or what they would like it to be. Number three was to develop some improvement alternatives. Number four was to evaluate those improvement alternatives. Number five was to present our alternatives to the public and get feedback. And lastly, we wanted to provide some recommendations to safely and efficiently move this east-west traffic, whether it's vehicle or pedestrian, through the southern portion of Columbus. So here's a little timeline of this study. So it was actually started back in January, so about nine months or so ago, where we started our initial data collection. Once we got that data collected, we went through some traffic and safety analysis, as well as a public survey. So getting that feedback on what this corridor, what residents in the area would like to see this corridor be. We combined that data and looked at some alternatives development, and then we screened some of those alternatives. And eventually, we got ourselves a draft final study report published a couple of weeks ago, and we've shared that with Rick and his team. So I'm going to actually walk through each piece of these tonight, very briefly, just kind of touch on some of the high points throughout the study, and then we're going to open up for questions at the end. So in terms of existing and future traffic operations, so after we collected all that data, we performed a level of service analysis for six study intersections along the Eighth Street corridor. Level of service is a term that many of you may already know, but if anyone needs a refresher, it kind of rates how congested an intersection is on a scale similar to getting a grade from like a test or an exam. So what we really want is to be maybe in the level of service A through C range. Once we get to level of service D, E, and F, that's where we start to see some levels of congestion, maybe some queuing, some backing up at certain intersections. So in the existing conditions, so that's the white background with the black lettering, you see that most of the intersections are actually operating pretty okay. Level of service C, that's something we would really like to see in a lot of areas. So not a lot of issues, but when we grow, some of the future operations, when we grew the traffic to future levels, to two thousand and forty levels, we did see some of these intersections start to degrade at Twenty-Third Ave, Twelfth Ave, and at Third. But as we go through this presentation, we'll kind of talk about ways that we're going to potentially improve those operations for users of the Eighth Street corridor. In terms of existing conditions, we also looked at crash severity and a crash heat map. So what this heat map is kind of showing you on the screen is looking at how many crashes occur along the corridor, with the more crashes showing up in a darker red, and the fewer crashes showing up in a lighter green, or no color at all. So we use these maps to look for locations that have a higher-than-expected numbers of crashes, in which we determined in this case, it was kind of as per the norm for most places. There wasn't something that necessarily stood out to us as a huge safety need for the corridor, but we also got some good feedback that we'll talk about in terms of safety, that led to some additional alternatives. So as I've kind of said probably too many times already, but we did do a lot of initial public outreach and outreach throughout this project. During our initial public outreach, we actually reached out and did a ten-question survey. And all ten questions are actually shown in the final and draft report, but I'm just going to go through a couple of them very briefly, so I don't take up too much time. But first of all, we asked people if they can easily access their destination, so their home, place of work, school. And for a majority of people, they strongly agreed with that statement. So only about fifteen percent or so either disagreed or strongly disagreed. Additionally, we asked if people felt safe driving along Eighth Street. And that was, a majority was yes, but there is definitely some room for improvement, so we were looking at the no there. And then continuing on, we asked if there's pedestrian and bicycle facilities, are they satisfactory within the study area? And this is where we actually saw that a lot of residents or people that maybe lived in the area said no, and they would be looking to maybe some improvements from a pedestrian or bicycle standpoint. And then lastly, we asked people if changes and improvements to Eighth Street are needed. And a lot of them said yes, over seventy percent, but when prompted to say what those changes should be, it was a little undecided or split on what improvements should be. So after we gathered that initial data, as well as that initial public outreach, we started looking at alternatives. And we actually looked at eight different alternatives, and numbers one through five, we're going to touch on in a little bit, because we actually refined those alternatives. Numbers six, seven, and eight, that we've graded out, we actually removed during our initial alternative screening. And to touch on those briefly, number six was to restripe Sixth Street to a narrow three-lane section. So that'd be similar to just east of Twelfth Ave. So from the back of curb to back of curb, Eighth Street is actually about thirty-three feet wide. And if we were to restripe that during some raining or flooding events, users would have to potentially drive in the gutters, maybe some potential flooded gutters on the streets. So that is one of the main reasons why we removed number six. For number seven, widening Eighth Street to a standard three-lane section. So that would actually be taking the curbs and moving them out a little bit to maybe provide as wide of pavement as you would see maybe east of Tenth Ave, east about forty-one feet wide, thirty-eight to forty-one feet. And due to potential significant tree loss, cost and utility impacts. And when you do have wider streets, you may see some increase in travel speeds, which we don't want for residential area. We remove that option as well. And lastly, traffic calming measures. So one of the main reasons why this was removed from the initial alternatives was because other east-west streets in the area don't have these calming measures as well. So depending on the calming measure that we put in, you could have some diversion to some other streets in the area that aren't necessarily set up for that type of traffic. So those one through five that I didn't touch on right away, we are going to touch on those now, because those got taken from the initial alternatives and put into a refined alternative. So first, we're going to talk about, we're going to go over the no build, so that's kind of the do nothing. That's what we always like to do, is establish a baseline as what we want to compare all our alternatives to when we're analyzing these alternatives. So first, we're going to talk about mini roundabouts. So mini roundabouts, they behave very similar to traditional roundabouts, like the one up by the YMCA and Columbus High School on the north side of Columbus. The main difference between a traditional roundabout and a mini roundabout is there's a lot smaller footprint, as the name would say. So there are lower circulating speeds that provide some sort of traffic calming aspects. Some of the pros to this alternative is that it would break up the continuous concrete stretches along Eighth Street. It would create some beautification opportunities. It would provide better traffic operations than a stop-controlled intersection, because it is only yielding, if many of you have driven through a roundabout before, and it improves safety. So this is an example of a mini roundabout at Eighth Street and Twelfth Ave. And instead of going through every single one, we also wanted to show where we would potentially put these mini roundabouts along Eighth Street. So they kind of align with the study intersections that we established at the beginning of the study. So alternative two, we kind of called widen key intersections. In these, we looked at reconstructing some study intersections to provide a standard lane width for these turn lanes. So when you're driving Eighth Street, when you come up to Twelfth Ave, some of the lane widths are a little bit narrower than you would typically see in other portions of Columbus. Widening these and providing additional turn lanes would improve traffic operations at these stop-controlled intersections, and it would reduce the need for users to drive in flooded gutters, as they do potentially today, at some of these intersections where we want to provide some turn lanes. Additionally, with this widen key intersection, we looked at locations where the traffic has changed since the last study that has been done along the Eighth Street corridor. And Eighteenth Ave is a great example. So once the pedestrian viaduct to the north was constructed, a lot less vehicular traffic shows up on Eighth Street. So one of the options with this was actually removing some of the left-turn lanes along Eighth Street and Eighteenth Ave. And even with removing these, it does not impact traffic operations, and it provides a wider through lane for east-west vehicle traffic. And lastly, with this alternative to widen key intersections, we looked at adding different signage, some additional stop signs along Eighth Street as well. And I actually drove this way into town today, and I can see why the traffic operations showed that this intersection may degrade a little bit in the future. So adding some additional stop signs, I know that both pictures look fairly similar, but we're looking at adding stop signs on Eighth Street itself, so changing it from a two-way stop-controlled to a four-way. This would provide safe opportunities for pedestrians to cross Eighth Street, and allow adequate gaps for vehicles to turn onto or cross Eighth Street, improving operations when compared to the no build. So this was definitely one of the things we took from the public in the initial public input, where people were talking about they were having difficulties crossing Eighth Street. So providing them a safe and secure place that they know that a vehicle is stopped, so they're able to make that crossing maneuver. So kind of combining all those into a map, that first intersection, that one we showed on Twelfth Ave, where we are widening out the roadway, reconstructing the intersection to provide some turn lanes, we would look to do that at Twenty-Six, Twenty-Third, and Twelfth Ave. And then providing some change in signage or some change in pavement markings, we would do that at Eighteenth Ave and Third Ave. And the last one of the main alternatives we'll talk about are the one-way couplets. So alternative three A, the one shown in the blue lines, would convert Eighth Street to a two-lane eastbound one-way street, and Ninth Street to a two-lane westbound one-way. Alternative three B, the one shown with the red lines, would convert Seventh Street to a two-lane eastbound one-way, and Eighth Street to a westbound one-way. So these options look fairly similar, but they operate a little differently. In option three A, we would need some reverse curves in order to get up to Ninth Street, kind of near the Dollar General and Casey's out there on the east end of the study area, as well as another curve to get back to Eighth Street before we connect with US Thirty. Alt three B, you would actually start the one-way pair with a new traffic signal that's on US Thirty or Thirty-Third Ave, and then find a good path to get it back to Eighth Street before continuing east. Some of the pros to this option would be it would split traffic across two roadways, reducing the number of vehicles that would drive on Eighth Street on a daily basis. So it'd pretty much take all the traffic you have today and divide it by two, and kind of split that over a parallel route. But these one-way pairs would have some significant right-of-way impacts, as some of you may see, due to the required connections. These options would also potentially increase some out-of-direction travel, depending on where you were trying to go, and may cause some driver confusion, as well as a potential increase in travel speeds. So in addition to the alternatives, we also looked at some optional add-ons from some public input. And those two options were pedestrian and bicycle improvements, as well as some enhanced crosswalk improvements. So first, we're going to talk about the pedestrian and bicycle improvements. So one of the optional add-ons that we looked at was providing a shared-use path along Eighth Street, as well as Eighteenth Ave, and that's shown in that yellow shading you see on the right. These shared-use paths would connect recently constructed or existing infrastructure to kind of connect the southern portion of Columbus, if you wanted to walk or ride a bike from end to end. So Pawnee Park on the left, the new viaduct on Eighteenth Ave to the north, as well as the new shared-use path on Third Ave on the west side of the roadway. You could kind of get all through there if there was an additional shared-use path connection along Eighth Street. I know we haven't talked about construction costs yet, and those are actually provided, some high-level construction costs on the left side there in those bullets. Additionally, we looked at some enhanced crosswalks at study area intersections. This would provide some highly visible delineation for crosswalks at intersections, while providing some beautification opportunities. Rick let me know that he could potentially field any questions on these, because this type of treatment is being proposed elsewhere in town, which you already may know. The approximate construction cost is also shown on the left side of this slide here. All right, so here's the fun part. So once we developed all these alternatives, we brought them back to the public in an online meeting setting in order to gauge the public's interest on these options. So due to COVID nineteen, the meeting was originally scheduled for a June timeframe, so we thought it was best that we would provide an online option. And the good thing about online public meetings is sometimes we actually see more people respond and participate in these types of meetings than an in-person meeting. So we did get a lot of responses on these types of alternatives. So as you can kind of see, from the top to the bottom, these are how the alternatives and optional add-ons ranked from most preferred to least preferred. So the two pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure improvements, shared-use paths and enhanced crosswalks, were number one and two, followed by mini roundabouts and widening in key intersections, with the rest kind of falling to the least preferred. Additionally, with the online public meeting voting, HGR and Rick's team pulled together a scoring matrix for the alternatives from our side. So a shaded gray circle represents a highest score, while an empty circle represents the lowest score. So you can see on this table, it's also going to be published in the final report. It might take me another thirty minutes to go through this table, so we'll just let you guys look at it kind of on your own. Construction costs, like we talked about, are shown at the bottom of this table for each alternative. So jumping into the conclusions and recommendations, this was the last objective of our study, and last objective of most traffic studies, was to look at what is recommended for the corridor. So looking long-term, recommended alternatives based on the public input, our own scoring matrix, and other things, we're recommending some mini roundabouts, shared-use paths along Eighth Street and Eighteenth Ave, and enhanced crosswalks improvements within the study area. This is not an immediate need when we're talking about roundabouts in the near term from a traffic operations or safety standpoint, as we kind of looked at before. But as Eighth Street continues to grow, we think this would be the more recommended option for the Eighth Street corridor. In the short term, we also recommended some very low-cost options to kind of delay or push final improvements a little bit further down the road. And those are listed on the left. One of them is, there's a westbound left turn at Twenty-seventh Ave. There is a very low left-turning movement there that we would have the opportunity to remove and not impact operations at Eighteenth Ave. That's one that we already showed, removing the eastbound and westbound left-turn lanes. At Twelfth Ave, we would want to restripe the northbound and southbound approaches to provide some left-turn base, especially with that viaduct coming online. And on Third Ave, adding stop signs on the eastbound and westbound approaches to provide some gaps for those people coming out of Third Avenue to either cross Eighth Street or to get into the traffic flow. So I think that's my last slide. So yeah, that wraps up my presentation, so we'll have to open it up for questions, and hopefully Rick or myself can.
Yes. Mr. Kreshaw.
Yes. First of all, I wish I had been included in this study, because I live on Eighth Street, and I know the problems that exist there. And your mini roundabouts, we got a lot of older people living on Eighth Street, and I'm sure they would be very confused. And our sidewalks are terrible on both sides of Eighth Street. We've got plenty, I mean, a few people here tonight that would back me up on that. And restriping, that does not solve our problem of traffic. I mean, Twelfth Ave is going to be opening, next summer Twenty-Third Street is going to be worked on. That's going to send all the traffic down Twelfth Ave and Third Ave for people that work on the south side of town. They'll be going down Twelfth Ave and Third Ave to get to Eighth Street. So I mean, your traffic study was made in January, right?
Yes, we collected data before the Twelfth Ave viaduct was closed for construction.
When a lot of these changes are made, I'd like to have another traffic study to see how accurate your traffic study is. And one other point, did you guys consider Tenth Street? Tenth Street is a lot wider than Ninth Street. And if you, once you get by Twenty-Third Ave, there's not that many houses you've got to deal with. Because Ninth Street and Tenth Street both end on Thirtieth Ave.
Okay, there's a lot of questions. I wish I would have written some of them down, but to your last point, looking at a street that was one additional block away from Eighth Street, so talking Tenth Street or Sixth Street.
Yeah, one block away from Ninth Street.
So one of the reasons why that was considered during the initial alternatives for a potential route for the one-way pairs, with talking with some transportation professionals throughout the country, and we actually tried to look at some use cases of seeing when a one-way pair is not with the adjacent street. That was one thing we were concerned with, was some potential driver confusion. So if you were trying to get up to Tenth Street, you would potentially turn down Ninth Street, and you would get some additional cut-through traffic on Ninth Street. And that's what we were concerned about, was the under-utilization of the route that we would potentially want to route them on. But I agree with you about the three-lane section, and that's why we ended up getting rid of it in the initial alternatives screening, because you are correct, that a three-lane section does not solve the problem there. And one other point, and that's why we definitely said it is a long-term solution. It's not something that mini roundabouts, yes, they do have some confusion for some drivers, but from a safety aspect, you do get very less severe crashes at a roundabout than you would at a traditional intersection. I don't know, Rick, you would have anything to add on that?
Dennis, did you get the two letters?
Pardon?
Did you get the two letters that were sent out to all the property owners in the area?
I don't remember getting them. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't remember getting them, because I would have sure liked to have been at any meetings you had. And also teleconference meetings, that's, to me, no way to hold a meeting. I mean, I'd like to see public meetings, you know? I know with the virus, we didn't have much choice, but down the line, I hope we have some public meetings on this.
And to that point, I think at HGR, we've definitely seen some, a lot more engagement across the board, whether it's young people, old people, with these online public meetings. But I think going forward, I think you're one hundred percent right. I think the best solution would be have best of both worlds and be able to provide both, so that someone who can't maybe make the public meeting can also voice their opinion.
All right, well, thank you.
Rick, did you have something to add?
You know, no, I think Jake did a pretty good job, but if anybody has any questions for me. I guess, just to reiterate a little bit, we did the study before any of the viaducts were closed, any of the streets were closed, so we have that good data. We did do two mailings and got actually a lot of input from a lot of people through that process of doing it online. Doing the mailings, we're pretty happy about that. I agree that in the future, they need to be this way, it's the COVID thing that got us all messed up. Even the state of Nebraska is doing them this way now, so we're trying to do the best that we can doing it. But we did get a lot of good input on it, so.
I did do the online study anyway.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, Rick.
Committee members, other questions? Jake.
Sorry, I need to raise my hand. Do we do a demographics on the surveys of age respondents?
No, we do not do demographics on the surveys.
That probably would have been helpful, because I think in Dennis's case, he believes that his neighborhood is elderly, and that might have debunked maybe some of that, or showed up the people that were actually doing the studies, maybe the younger people as opposed to the older people.
I think, if I can, just to Rick's point, or Rich's point as well, when it's an online study, I think our older citizens, they'll, they avoid doing them, because they're a little intimidated by the technology part of it. And so I think a lot of our feedback isn't always going to be, I think that demographic point is really important, because a lot of our older citizens aren't going to do an online study if they're not comfortable with the technology, so.
Yeah, and I guess I can kind of agree with that. We did try to assist that, like in the mailings and online, that if you provide numbers and phone calls to HGR or to our engineering officer, the case may be, to try to get some people that might have been a little uncomfortable with that. So we tried to reach out the best we can, I think, in this process that we had.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think a lot of people even have, a lot of older people even have computers, to tell you the truth.
Councilman Lor.
And your alternatives, three A and three B, the one-way couplets, you go cross-country at one end or the other. How many houses are you going to take out, and lots are you going to cut into?
And that answer is, it's definitely unknown, because it's a very preliminary type look at it. But that is one of the reasons why, if you look at the scoring matrix, it did rank one of the lowest when it came to property impacts, right-of-way, and cost, was when you're looking at what a preferred alternative would end up being, we're definitely looking at the cost aspect, and displacing people is obviously something you wouldn't want to do. So if you look at the scoring, I think that's why those alternatives, three A and three B, did lead towards the bottom.
Thank you.
Are there questions from the audience? Council members?
If you have it.
Sylvia.
Hello. I'm Sylvia Christensen. My husband and I purchased our lovely home in nineteen seventy-three. So it's been forty-seven years since I've lived on that corner of Eighth Street and Twenty-Third Ave. Now I can tell you all, in that length of time, the traffic has probably increased three times. What has been done? Okay, I made a turning lane outside of my driveway. Now I can tell you with honesty, that turn lane is used as a passing lane, because I can see it right out my kitchen window. Now, is that right? No. No. What can we do about it? I don't know. Someone said to me, "Put a stop sign there." Put a stop sign there? How in the wide world would I ever get out of my driveway? I have a hard time getting out of my driveway now, between 4:00 and 6:00. If I had an emergency, I'd call 911 and say, "Get over here, I need to get out of this driveway." Now, do I have the solution? Absolutely not. But what I'd love to see before I end this, my life, would I love to see somebody else move into my property and say, "Somebody did something to help this traffic." That's all I ask. I've heard them talk about one-ways, it's been years ago. I would say seven, guessing. I came and I asked, "Can we make 7th Street one-way, 8th Street another?" And they looked at me and said, "No, that is impossible." I would like any of you to say to me, "Why isn't that possible? It would take half the traffic away, give it to somebody else." Now, I'm not going to mention any names, I don't believe in that. But at that meeting, I went home, there was this phone call from this person saying, "What do you think you're doing?" And I said, "What do you mean, what am I doing?" They said, "We don't want that traffic by us." I said, "Well, big deal, I don't want it all either. I'd like you to take half of it." And so now is that, is that being wrong? When somebody says, and then I also had a mayor tell me, won't mention his name, "Sylvia, you chose to live here." I said, "Yes, I did. I loved this home. I would, I, I would have to live it to live there 47 years." And I said, "I, any of you that know where I live, I've done my best to keep that home looking good. I've tried everything in my power. In fact, I got the old house across from me removed after fighting for 20-some years. And guess what's happening? I'm going to have a new home. Not me, but I'm going to have a new home built there." So I figure, check, you know how you check your list off? That's one thing I can check off. Well, I thank you for your time, I appreciate you listening, and my hope is, like I said, I can make that corner a safer, better place with less traffic. Thank you.
Our hope too.
Thank you, Sylvia.
You're welcome.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, if there's no more questions, come on. Hang on, Jake, just one sec.
Thought your point was me?
Well, I kind of was.
Hello, I live on 8th Street and 18th Avenue, I just have a couple of quick things.
David, need your name and address.
Dave Kunis, 17, 18, 8th Street. Okay, on the north side, I'm the one with solar panels. Since they put the walkover over 18th Avenue, the pedestrian and bicycle traffic on 18th Avenue, north and south, has at least tripled. And people, whole families are coming down, but we have people running stop signs on 8th Street all the time. I like the mini roundabout, that seemed like it'd slow them down a little bit. Also, do the, will the semi be able to go around that mini roundabout? Because.
Jake? With, with mini roundabouts, the act, the center median is actually mountable if there happens to be a, a truck that needs to do it? So it'd be taking.
Well, what I'm getting at is, they aren't supposed to be driving down 8th Street. So I was thinking if we could put about a three-foot concrete wall in the middle of that mini roundabout, that'd stop them. Another thing, did you by any chance study how many people come from south of the river to down 8th Street to go to work?
No, that was not part of this study.
Okay, I was just curious because too bad the city and the county and the state couldn't get together and put a bridge across, that would alleviate most of traffic. We get an awful lot of traffic coming from the west every morning.
It is ironic that you say that because there is, if you sit and stay for the rest of the council meeting, there is an agenda item where Columbus, Platte County, Colfax County, Butler County.
Polk County.
Polk are, are coming together for a study. Now, you know, and I realize when you say study, a lot of people laugh, but for a study to look at a potential bridge that would connect us to Highway 64 to the east of Columbus. So.
Yeah, that might be cross-prohibitive, but it would, I was, I watched all the 25 and 41 county cars coming down, and if the 25 county, that would save them half the miles going across, then 8th Street, we really wouldn't need to do, put more than some new stop signs up if that would work. Well, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
Plus, it would eliminate a lot of truck traffic too, I would, I think.
You know, I, I hate to hear the, the fact that there's people running stop signs on 8th Street at 18th, but I'd love to hear that you're getting traffic off the pedestrian overpass. I mean, seriously, because I've had many people just say it's a joke. So I'm, I'm extremely glad to hear that it is being utilized and getting. Now, we'll talk, we'll talk to our friend in the back of the room about those stop signs being run.
Any other comments or concerns? We stand adjourned.